Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session Agenda. Item number one is Call to Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Thank you very much. Item number two is Call to the Audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the Issue-Review Session and Committee of the Whole Items on this Work-Study Session Agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Madam Clerk, are there any speaker cards this evening?
None received.
Okay, sounds good. Well, I will move to the next part of our agenda, which is Item 3A, Community Health and Human Services Department Impact Report for Fiscal Year 2022-2023. And I see a bunch of people. Tim Burt, Octavia Harris, Nicole Spurkali, one, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tim Burt, Department of Community Health and Human Services Director, and I'm joined today by Octavia Harris, who is the Deputy Director over our Tempe Community Coalition, and our TCC Board President, Nicole. And we're going to walk you today through our impact report in fiscal year 2022-2023 and give you an update on what we've been up to since we last came before you last year with this work-study item. As a reminder, the community priorities that this department and its partners touch through Agency Review and all the other services touch a vast amount of the community priorities that you have put forward for this city. I want to just reiterate to those who may be watching that the Department of Community Health and Human Services touch a wide array of inclusive programs and services to assist individuals and families in improving their quality of life throughout the city of Tempe. They live here, they work here, they play here. You want to make sure that social cohesion is present for them. Our Continuum of Trauma inform services address needs across the lifespan, so from cradle to crane, so the agency jargon goes. To achieve this, we leverage partnerships not only across multiple departments in the city, across all of our internal program areas, but certainly through the over 200-funded program partners, agencies, and services that are present throughout the TCC funding array. And I'll turn it over to Octavia and Nicole for a bit.
Sure. So, TCC's mission is to connect those need with those who care. And TCC does this by convening community, conducting research, determining priorities, implementing effective programs, and exemplifying prudent stewardship of our resources.
And so, through the investment of mayor, council, and the community, investing in our purpose as well as our progress toward our missions through both funding decisions and volunteering, we're able to have our ability to provide equitably programs and services that achieve community-level changes through aligning and integrating all of our actions.
All right. So, what we're going to be able to give you this afternoon is an overview of what you'll see in our new digital report. The format has taken a year to culminate in this digital report, which will be available on the website through a digital portal this evening. It is the culmination of a lot of hard work and realignment. What you're going to see in this, and this is the cover page of the report, so as you click through, will highlight what's new about it. We have realigned all of the investments that you, as a city council, have made through our programs to align with social determinants of health. So, again, really to have this consistent conversation around what are the outcomes? What is this investment getting for the residents of Tempe? We have aligned them with those determinants. We have highlighted program outcomes. You'll see the investment and the outcome of those programs. In the spirit of Tempe's open data, we have the proposed goals, the actual outcomes for each program, available for every single funded program, internal and external. And because we're in the people business, we want to highlight some of the people that have gone through the programs, and there are qualitative vignettes available for each one of the areas as well. So, as you or folks watching go and access the report, you want to highlight some things that are far different from the last time you've seen this. If you look to the boxes in red, these are the groupings of the social determinants of health. There's multiple models out there. We have a city that aligns with the vitalist health wheel. So, you'll see these down the left in the program menu bar. And as you click to each page, at the top of the page, there is a definition of what that social determinant of health is, with a little bit of an introduction as well. In the green box below that, you'll see the investment that Tempe has made in that area, that social determinant of health area. In the gold, you'll see a outcome tile for some leading programs in that service area, one for the city internal programs and one for our agency-funded programs, with few exceptions where we had dual investment, we wanted to show one of each. But more important for folks, if you click on that All Outcomes tab on the bottom right of the screen there, you'll get this, where you'll be able to scroll through the data of every funded program, internal, external, see what they proposed to do, what they actually did, and whether they met or exceeded their goals. And of course, as we mentioned, we can't come to you and talk to you about people and incomes without telling you the stories, because the numbers are good. And it is really great to know that 99% of our programs met or exceeded their goals, that we invested over $46 million. Live change bets encapsulated in some of these stories and pictures for your review as well. So, we want to walk through with you some of these. The social determinant of health here for access to care refers to making sure that people have timely access to services. And this includes mental health services as well. Tempe invested over $3.8 million in making sure these services are available to individuals in Tempe. One of the examples of the internal programs that we're really proud of is that 97% of the students who accessed our school support specialists across all the schools in the Tempe districts said that they felt that their coping skills to deal with crisis in their own lives were vastly improved as a result of working with our CARE7 youth specialists.
And also, we have TIP, which is provided by Peer Solutions. It's a longtime partner with an outcome of 90% of student participants increasing in their knowledge, skill, attitudes after participating in this program that is designated to normalize safety, equity, and respect.
So, our next element is affordable, quality housing. And Tempe invested $32.9 million in this particular social determinant of health element. And quality housing is an investment in good health. And so, our agency partner, New Leaf, with their East Valley Men's Center service program, provides shelter services, and they had 85% of their clients improve their self-sufficiency toward creating a plan through case management that includes housing stability and seeking care for mental health.
One of the things we've, as a team, come before you in recent months and talked to you about the return on investment and what we've done in improving up our leasing rate through our Housing Authority to over 97%. So, to reflect this $32.9 million investment in affordable housing, we wanted to highlight a different program outcome for you, and that is focusing on the quality piece of this affordable housing. 100% of all of our units meet all 13 standards of housing quality standards according to the federal government, and we're really proud as a high-functioning agency to provide that level of quality housing to our residents. For community safety, this goes beyond typical law enforcement. We think about programs that help people feel socially connected, free from crime and violence, promoting social interaction, and inclusivity for community members. We invested $1.09 million rather than these programs. One of the highlighted outcomes for us here through our Family Assistance Center, with many of you have supported over the years, 90% of all the victims that have come through that center say they feel reduced anxiety and an increased ability to better navigate the criminal justice system with their advocates as they pursue justice for the wrongs that have been perpetrated against them.
Really quickly, too, Councilmember Adams has a question?
Yes, just to go back a little bit. I was wondering if you guys have inspections from Tempe employees regarding the different places that we use for providing shelter? Like, do you have somebody from the city of Tempe that comes in and does inspections?
Absolutely. So, any voucher holder that says, "I'm going to come and rent this space," we have staff that are trained in HUD Quality Standards or HQS inspections, and we go out and inspect every single unit before we allow it to be leased up.
So, actually, city employees are looking at these things before another place is turned over?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, we also have My Sister's Place. This is a domestic violence shelter located in the East Valley, where our target outcome was 100% of our clients increase their safety and stability away from abusive and dangerous situations, and this included for them creating a safety plan.
And next, economic opportunities.
Really quickly, Councilmember Hodge has a question, too?
Okay, sorry. But we just work for me.
How about this? I'll go to Councilmember. Oh, there it is. Go for it.
Okay. So, my question is about My Sister's Place. Is that after they've been through our first domestic, because we have our own, and is it transferred into or did they go directly into it right off the bat? Is it some transitional or is it the beginning? I'm just curious, because I know it, but I don't know that answer to that question.
Right. So, it could be either/or, so through that no-wrong-door approach. So, either they could reach out through a domestic violence hotline or contact My Sister's Place directly, or go through CARE7. And so, that coordination of services is something that we can see lived out through. If you call CARE7, then My Sister's Place is one of the options for domestic violence shelter.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brandberg?
Mr. Mayor, guys, I just have like a, just a procedural question. Like, when you're coming up with the 90%, the 100%, like, how are you getting that percentage? Are you sending out surveys? Are you doing like one-on-one interviews of the folks that are in these programs? Like, how are you coming up with that percentage?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the measuring tool depends on the outcome. Each funded program has to establish upfront. We say that we're going to increase the feeling of safety and stability, so we'll do pre-post surveys. We have some outcomes in here that are based on interview and client notes. So, as we fund the program, I don't want to speak for Agency Review too much, but we do that for the internal programs as well. We identify upfront what the tools and the measurements and the proposed outcomes are, and then hold them to that throughout the whole of the year. Certainly would defer to.
No, no, that is absolutely the same thing as the funded agency partners, and so they do create their own metrics. We do revisit them before the contract process begins, and they do report either pre-post or through interviews, whatever is going to be the most appropriate evaluation tool.
Quick follow-up question. Do you guys do like an audit of that?
We absolutely do.
Just to make sure that what they're giving you is the correct information?
That is correct. And so, there are quarterly reports that get submitted by each agency. They are reviewed by staff, and then site visits are conducted once a year, also checking in through communities of practice, different things like that.
Councilmember Hodge?
So, when they get out of like My Sister's Place or our shelters, are they placed on a higher, like, higher level if we're trying to get them into maybe one of our voucher programs or Habitat or something of that nature to keep them in stability? Because I know this is not, it's semi, but it's not permanent, permanent. So, I'm just saying, do we have a system that they can get, we want to get them into a, like, a voucher program? Do they get higher placements because they're coming out of one of the shelters, or is it just as they come in, feeding?
A part of the, from the department's standpoint, we are a part of the centralized, coordinated intake and ranking system for all of, through the continuum of care for housing for individuals and for families. So, a housing assessment is done on every family that goes in a program to get them on those wait lists, which can be, you know, three, six, nine months long, depending on the size of the property they may need. And we continue to work them through programs like this as they await. And that's why these interdisciplinary case conferencing is so important, to make sure that we don't lose track of families while they're waiting on this centralized list. But in regard to housing choice vouchers, there are, because those are federal programs with their own waitlist, there are no bonus points for coming through like a My Sister's Place program. Yes, I thought, just want to make sure I address that clearly, because we already have opened and closed our list and are filling it, so new clients coming in would be put on a future waitlist.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
So, in terms of economic opportunity, this includes things like job training, mentorship, and definitely a living wage, internet access. Tempe invested $426,000 in programs addressing economic opportunity. And one of our partners, the Centers for Rehabilitation, located right here in Tempe, they had a goal of having 35% of their participants increasing their job skills and independence. And that's because TCH works with adults with disabilities as well as intellectual development delays. And so, they do that through education, school, work skills development, things like that.
And of course, we're all very proud of the Tempe Works program. The goal for that internal program this year was to move from 15 to 19 graduates. And in order to graduate, that means you've successfully completed 100% of all the tasks, the employment and the housing. So, we wanted to move that from 15 to 19, which is a 20% increase, and we did just that.
Yep. Councilmember Keating?
Last year, we did kind of a celebration for the graduates, me and Councilmember Hodge, I believe. Are we doing that every year? When can we expect to do that again? Because that was actually really cool, to get to meet these people.
Yeah, actually, that was something we can bring back to your council member and do that. We've had a recent changeover in staff, so we've been focused on the internal stability of that program, but we definitely have plenty of success stories, and we'll work on the graduation ceremony.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Hodge?
Okay, so, I was just recently at a conference for school boards, and they were asking a question, like, they asked about our Tempe Works program. Is there any way that we can partner? Because there's a need for like bus drivers and certain spots in the school districts that cannot be filled, and wondering if there's a way to partner that together. Is that something that can be done, or do we have to go out and do it separately? I'm just curious to bring a partnership for that.
Two great options for you, Councilmember Hodge, and great question. We have recently expanded beyond our traditional kind of field-based, more manual labor jobs, and we've had our first recent graduate who came through a front office job in our department, who is now working over at the Envision Center, with whom you'll all be visiting here later this week for a grand opening. And so, we are looking at expanding that, so we can work certainly from Tempe Works directly with the districts. We also have expanded our partnership with Maricopa at work, where we now have two job developers, one doing the individual one-to-one skill development, and one, Mr. Carter Ellis, whom you all probably have met over the years, is now a job harvester. So, he is out working with local employers, trying to understand what jobs they need, what skills they need, so we can match the individual to the jobs and create our own pipeline. So, we have a couple of options for you, and we'd love to talk to you more about that.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
So, in terms of healthy, affordable food, we want to create more access to food for folks in our community. And the $96,000 investment that Tempe had during this fiscal year went to partners, agency partners, because the city does not currently have any programs or services that distribute food to the community, but these services are instead provided by our partners. So, improving food security is really the aim of these programs, to provide more access to increased health as well as affordable food.
And then, we have two programs to highlight. So, the Tempe Community Action Agency, through the Food Pantry Program, had 85% of program participants report improved food security. And then, we also saw through the United Food Bank, 100% of the clients increased their access to the food through the 15 partner agencies.
And just a point of privilege to make a shout-out, the TCAA meeting with their leadership, they and food banks throughout the area need donations. So, if folks are listening and are so inclined to go make donations to those food banks, I want to take this opportunity to educate them on that, and the importance of also volunteering for like Meals on Wheels delivery programs. Recent survey data shows that seniors in our valley, 99% of them that receive Meals on Wheels, say that that is the single largest meal of that day that they will have. So, really important, and these programs thrive on volunteer efforts as well. So, just want to make that plug while we're on this slide. Thank you for that opportunity.
Yep, Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, just, I have a comment on Meals on Wheels. I used to deliver them with my mother when I was little. And you're not only providing meals for them, but you're providing emotional support. They look for it. A lot of times, those are the only volunteers they see all day. And it just is really valuable, both mentally and physically, to have Meals on Wheels. So, I'm a huge supporter. Anything I can do to help promote that, I would be glad to. And it's just, it's a really feel-good opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams.
You're welcome.
My son will tell you stories about me dragging him along over the years as well. So, we want to highlight quality education for you as well. And this is really important, because we know that education is the number-one lifetime determinant of your overall health and well-being outcomes for an individual. So, this looks like education, working conditions, health, insurance, wages, access to resources, all the things that we hope that you'll see again at the Envision Center as well as our programs here. This represents over $9.3 million in investment on behalf of the city of Tempe. So, you'll notice that our TempeP program, 100%, and we came through you with a Nork study recently, 100% of our kindergarten students were better prepared for long-term kindergarten and academic success in the future. And I recognize I stepped on your toes there. My apologies.
And then, another one we're highlighting is the Youth Prevention Education Program through Not My Kid. 85% of the participants achieved the outcome of learning a new life skill and the academic day, and within the academic day, so they could cope with the challenges that they're facing, and not misuse substances such as opioids.
Social and cultural cohesion, a piece of what Councilmember Adams was discussing about that connectivity that's so important when we work with people, is represented here in this social determinant of health. We have over $214,000 invested here. The 100% of our individuals that came through our Connect Tempe program have felt like we were able to bridge the digital divide, because digital literacy is literacy. If you can't access a computer, form an email address, you can't register with your doctor's portal to book a healthcare appointment. And we've seen that with our seniors, and we're so thankful for the Senior Planet Digital Curriculum for AARP. And this really, this was the catalyst for what, again, I'll keep making the plug for the Envision Center, for what you'll see there. It started with this team. Also, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, you all give so much power to their voice. Every single year, we bring them into real conversations with department heads to hear from the young people about what their view of the issue is, and help them learn, but help us learn as well. And over 85% of them were surveyed and said they now feel like they know how to make a difference in their community. So, we're really proud of those initiatives and efforts as well. And social justice, this is making sure that people have access to a challenge in justice in their community and feel focused on improving their well-being. $695,000 is invested here. Want to highlight our Community Supervision Program. We had a graduation for some of those graduates recently as well, and we restructured this to make sure that we could decrease wait times. Our goal was to decrease wait times by 38%. We obliterated that, and just wait times were completely done away with. So, kudos to Donna Calandros and her amazing team over there, who also, in the same year, came up with an incentives program to make sure that the $50 fees, which could be as big as, feel like a thousand if you don't have that in your pocket, could be moved into doing things like community service, taking access to counseling and small group classes, and let us then waive some of those fees in lieu of you accessing other supportive services. Really hopefully get to the root of why you were in the justice system to begin with. We increased participation by 149%. That means that many less cases had to get remanded back to court to go through the system, and these people had better outcomes. We're excited about that. This work cannot be done alone at all. So, I want to thank all of Community Health and Human Services, but especially Octavia Harris, who has helped me wrestle with this issue of realignment on this for the last year. So, thank you, and I'll turn over your thank yous, because you've got a lot of them.
So, just want to say thank you again to mayor and council for your continued investment in Community Health and Human Services within our community, and definitely to the Enterprise, GIS, and data analytics teams, so Stephanie Dietrich and her team, for their Herculean efforts in getting with our consultation conversations with us to create the dashboard. And again, all of the Community Health and Human Services staff, all of the TCC staff and volunteers who helped provide the services as well as data for today's report. Thank you to all of our donors, as well as our grant funders, for all of their monetary investment, as well as, again, with the city's investment, too. And just really want to say thank you to everyone for all of their compassion, providing their lived experience, professional expertise prior to the funding being awarded and throughout the year, because we do rely on all of our volunteers to help us. And so, just thank you again.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, again, thank you to every single Community Health and Human Services employee, whether you're working the front desk, answering phones, or you're cleaning up the lobby. Everything you do goes to help the individuals that are able to perform these programmatic duties. So, these outcomes are yours as well, and of course, they are yours, mayor and council, because you made the decisions to let us go and invest in these wonderful programs. So, we're here for any questions you might have for us as well.
Excellent. Thank you so much for the presentation. Any further comments? Vice Mayor?
So, one, I love the Community Supervision graduation that we had here, piggybacking on what Councilmember Keating had said. The stories there that were presented when we did that was also really impactful. So, I'd like to, it'd be great if we can continue to do that here at the council meeting also, and share those stories, because I think that it just opens up a world, a different world for these people, because they have graduated. And one thing they were saying is the incentives programs made a difference, and they were, they took these extra classes to kind of wipe away their fee, but ended up loving the class that they took and wanted to take as something different. So, I just completely commend you. And as Councilmember Adams had said about Meals on Wheels, I've done that here in Tempe as backup for another group that's doing them. And the volunteers that do that on a regular basis, when I went and knocked on the door, they're like, you know, you're not my regular person. But they were, it was nice to see them and nice to have a little bit of a conversation, but they get so attached to the people that go and deliver the foods to them, and they really get to know them. And I think those type of volunteers and the people that we have in our community supervision, you guys knock it out of the park. Those numbers that we, the numbers you're showing right now are just spectacular, and if I could ever do anything else in my life, I would want to go work with you guys. You do such a great job. Thank you so much for everything you're doing for our community and all the people who are vulnerable, who need this service. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Garland. Any other further comments or questions?
Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate all the hard work and the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to Item 3B, Opioid Response Plan Update. Tim, doesn't look like he went very far. And welcome, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you again, mayor and council. Tim Burt, Community Health and Human Services, and I'm here with Mary Maisy, the newest Deputy Director for the Department of Community Health and Human Services.
Welcome.
Even before her role, she was instrumental in getting this plan to where it is today. So, very thankful for the entirety of the team who's gotten us here, and we'll talk about that a little bit. I want to make sure that you understand that what we've done has been driven by Performance Measures 1.31, addressing opioids, and 1.21, youth alcohol, marijuana, and opioid usage rates, making sure that we're in constant alignment with the performance measures that you've set forth for us.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Opioid misuse is a serious public health threat. According to the CDC, overdose deaths have increased nearly 300% over the past 20 years in the U.S., primarily due to opioids. And like communities across the country, we're feeling that impact here in Tempe. Here on this slide, you see our overdose counts for the past five years, and this information is provided by our partners at the Maricopa County Department of Public Health. And while we see these as case counts, we know that these numbers are members of our community. These are our neighbors, our friends, and our family members. And while our overdose deaths in our community have increased 25% since 2019, we are seeing signs for cautious optimism with overdoses decreasing over the past two years. Notably, there's been a 14% decrease in fatal overdoses and a 16% decrease in non-fatal This next slide highlights our fatal overdose rate compared to the rate for Maricopa County. And while you'll notice that our rate is higher than the county's rate, you do see that decrease in the past two years. And nationally, there's been conversation about the decrease in fatal overdoses being attributed to the attributed to the increased availability of naloxone. You may hear that commonly referred to as Narcan, so that's one of the name brands that's commonly available. And here, within the city of Tempe, we are implementing several strategies to increase availability of Narcan. So the Tempe Police Department, Tempe Fire Medical Rescue, and the Park Rangers are directly administering Narcan in the field when applicable. And Tempe Fire Medical Rescue has its Narcan Leave Behind program, as well as the Tempe Coalition provides Narcan training and distributes Narcan to training attendees who complete that training.
Quick question, Councilmember Hodge.
My question is, I see when you say about the different rates between the Maricopa and Tempe, is that contribute to the fact that we have ASU? Is that a part of it because we have more of a student populate, I mean, you know, college population? And what percentage of it, of our rates, is kids under the age of 18 versus the ones above? You don't have to answer those questions right now. You can get back to me, but those are questions I have, the thought process, because I still want to know exactly where the pocket of it is at, if it's kind of right down the middle, or is it more higher on different, with age bracket level? So.
Yeah, and we can provide some additional data outside of this presentation based on age ranges. These are rates that would include our entire population, all ages here.
So I'm curious to.
We'll follow up.
Yeah, so we can provide some additional follow-up after this presentation. Thank you for that question.
Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, so I have another question. So right now, we're in September, and so it's our ninth month of 2024. And I'm just, I'm wondering if, what the comparisons are from last year at this time.
So this is the most current available data from our partners at Maricopa County Department of Public Health. So you'll see it says preliminary data. We don't currently have data for through, for 2024. They're still working on that. As we have the most current data available from Maricopa County Department of Public Health, we'll be providing that.
Okay, and do we have, what about our own numbers in the city of Tempe?
So we do have our EMS calls dashboard, which I'll be getting to in a minute, that we do have that available on our website at datatempe.gov. But we do have our live dashboard that responds, that has information on our TMFR calls that are responded to, that are related to opioids.
Okay.
So there's different ways that overdoses are tracked, depending on who's looking at it. So we've been looking at the information provided by the Maricopa County Department of Public Health as one of the ways that we're looking at the data.
Okay, thank you.
But I'd be happy to provide some additional follow-up information.
Yes, and if we could just see some Tempe numbers, I think that would be, that would be good, since we're almost, you know, coming up on the end of the year. So I'm just curious how we're trending. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodge?
I just have one more for, with the breakdown also. Can I also get a breakdown on also unsheltered versus when you add that in there, that population in there?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Next, looking at non-fatal drug overdose rate compared to the county, you'll see that steep decline over the past two years. And as a city, we're looking at implementing a variety of strategies to reduce overdoses overall, so including numerous community-based and school-based education and awareness campaigns, looking to connect individuals to treatment and recovery services, including Tempe Police Department's first responder recovery projects program, and then reducing the amount of illicit substances in our community through drug seizure operations that are operated by our Tempe Police Department and their federal, state, and local partners. And so in terms of, one of the ways that we look at the impact of opioid misuse here in our community on the local level is we do have our opioid abuse probable EMS calls dashboard. And so this tracks our Tempe Fire Medical Rescue calls for service that they respond to that are related to opioid misuse. So this screenshot, I wanted to provide an annual count. So this was 2023, where you can see that Tempe Fire Medical Rescue responded to 603 calls related to opioid misuse. And this dashboard also provides information, demographic information, information on the day of the week that calls were responded to, the approximate location of the call, as well as if Narcan was provided. And so I did look before the meeting, and for this year, 2024, we've had 391 calls that Tempe Fire Medical Rescue has responded to through today. And so this information is available not only to us as city staff to help inform our program planning, strategy, but it's also available to residents to raise awareness of opioid misuse in our community. So that is available on our website, our open data catalog at datatempe.gov. And so we know that key to prevention and early intervention with opioid misuse is partnering with young people and their parents and caregivers. So another key data point that we look at is the Arizona Youth Survey. And so this is a survey that's administered with young people in eighth, 10th, and 12th grade every two years. And part of that survey is asking young people about their knowledge of and use of fentanyl. And so here, you can see information from the 2022 survey, specifically from our Tempe youth. We did have youth from all of our Tempe schools, public schools participate. And 2024 data is available, and so that just recently became available. Our partners with the Tempe Coalition are working to compile a Tempe-specific report for us, like they did in 2022. And while we're waiting for that Tempe-specific data, we can look at Maricopa County's data. And that is another bright spot for us, because we're seeing positive progress with six, a 67% increase in the number of young people who say that they're aware of fentanyl, and a 54% increase in the number of young people who say that they've had a conversation with a parent or caregiver about the dangers of fentanyl. So this is an indicator for us that parents and caregivers and youth are hearing our prevention and education messages.
Councilmember Hodge?
You know, I'm going to ask this question. Can, can I get it breaking, broke down? Is there any possible way that we can see, when we get to 2024, the eighth, the eighth graders versus the 10th graders versus the 12th graders? Because it really makes a difference, because Tempe is not unified. So the data comes down, it makes it, you break it down by district. So we can, whatever district is the, you know, seems like the situation, they can kind of work stronger on it, because when you do it all together, it doesn't work. We need to break it so that, so we can see by, per district where there could be a problem. So that's my next.
Yeah, absolutely. They do a great job, the Coalition, of providing a detailed breakdown of the Arizona Youth Survey, not only on this topic of fetinals, but other, other substances as well, and by grade.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so the, we've given you a background on the issue of opioids and the pandemic that it is in our community. This is a part and parcel of a larger report that is available this evening on tempe.gov/opioids. So the entire printed plan is available to you all, and it highlights things that we're doing in other areas of the city, the great program that Tempe PD has with the Impact Center for Post-Overdose Support Teams. All those current efforts are highlighted. But we, really the ask and why we're here this evening is, we've gone through a year-long expansive community planning process. The mayor will talk a little bit about the partners that have been involved with it, but we've used this structure. The National Opioid Settlements represent over $50 billion in class action lawsuits. The mayor and council signed on to the One Arizona Agreement some years ago. That has resulted in $1.12 billion being leveraged in settlements. That money comes to Maricopa Department of Public Health, and then they distribute it to the cities based on the size of the city at the time of the initial lawsuit and the impact data that we had available. So Tempe gets 3.27% of those overall settlements on an annual basis. And then right now, we're projecting about $9.2 million for seven active settlements over the next 18 years. So roughly about $500,000 a year will be coming down into our system to address the issues we want to talk to you about this evening.
Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, just have a question of the $500,000. What are you, are exactly doing with the money?
That is exactly what we're about to.
Okay, thank you.
Give you the results of our planning and ask for, give you our recommendation and ask for your support in us pursuing it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I'm glad we led you to that point.
That was, that was pretty good. Councilmember Brandberg?
Mr. Mayor, real quick question for Tempe's portion of that. Is that based on our actual population, or like how many people live here versus how many people live and work here? Because our population increases significantly during the day.
It is my understanding, and certainly I can stand corrected, it is based on resident population at the time of the initial settlements.
And rates.
And usage rates, yeah.
Yep. Councilmember Hodge?
Okay, when you say resident, does, does that include our, you know, our friendly neighbors ASU included in that? Or is, or is it, because they're here, but sometimes they're, they're resident, you know, they may not show as a resident, but they're actually living in our city. So is that including ASU?
That demographic information, I don't have the breakdown on. This was well-established in the initial agreement some four years ago, so, but I can dig in to see how they came up with the math.
All right, thank you. Because that really is a big population that we're missing when we look at stuff, if we're not looking at ASU's population, too.
All right, so this, much like the last report, this work has not been done in a vacuum, nor has it been done alone. I want to thank, obviously, everybody from the city manager's office, the Strategic Management Innovation Office, Community Health and Human Services, the Coalition, Tempe FMR, Tempe PD, ISG, AS Data, and certainly Maricopa Department of Public Health, through whom we got our amazing Jahan, who was our public health fellow for the last two years. And by the way, public congratulations to her for being hired on by the Mayo Clinic System, and so based on the work that she was able to do here with us. But we also went out and asked the community stakeholders, in addition to meeting quarterly and running through what it means to be a city and deal with this issue on a daily basis, we brought in partners from Arizona State University, all of the local impacted school districts, pathway programs, city attorney's office, community services department, because they see the impact on our parks, as well as some other program providers directly that are in the space of mental health and drug treatment, such as LaFrentara, Arizona Impact.
So in order to guide our current and our future work, our OCTUS leadership team developed these guiding principles, and these are really also adapted by the John Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health, and they have guiding principles on how best to utilize opioid settlement dollars. And really, these are built upon lessons learned from the tobacco litigation settlement funds from the late 90s. And it's estimated that only 3% of those revenues went to tobacco cessation and prevention programs. So it's our intent that through our mindful and purposeful application of these guiding principles, as well as the One Arizona Agreement, that we'll be ensuring that our opioid settlement funds are allotted and allocated for their intended purpose. And so as Tim mentioned, we've taken the past year to be really intentional in creating a collaborative planning process with city staff, you know, led by our OCTUS leadership team, as well as our external stakeholders, to develop the plan that we are presenting to you this afternoon. We started off with looking at opioid-specific data sets. So overdose data, a lot of the data that we presented to you at the start of this presentation. We also looked at some qualitative data sets. So our partners at Maricopa County Department of Public Health had conducted needs assessments, including a needs assessment of service providers, as well as a needs assessment of those with lived experience, so people who use drugs. We had Tempe representation and participation on both of those needs assessments. And then, as Tim mentioned, we had the support of a public health fellow, Jahan, who helped us to create a opioid-specific program inventory, so we could look at what are the programs and services that we're currently already providing within the city, so that we're not duplicating services with our settlement funds. So we had all this rich data, and we began meeting in work groups by our strategy areas to really look at what are those recommended strategies that we have to align with for that One Arizona Agreement? What are, what's the data telling us? What are our needs in our community, based on feedback from our stakeholders? And we have new strategies that we're seeking your direction in order to move forward with our utilizing our opioid settlement funds.
And really, these strategy-focused areas are driven by the idea that we want to reduce opioid deaths in Tempe. We want to improve the quality of life for those who are impacted by opioid use disorder, and we want to decrease the presence of opioids in our community.
Yeah. So starting off in the area of prevention, these are strategies that would be related to avoiding misuse from even starting. So for this year, we're looking to partner with our local school districts and youth-serving organizations to expand implementation of the Botman Life Skills Program. This has, it's evidence-based, it has research that shows that it prevents youth substance use, as well as it increases youth protective factors. So it's currently being implemented in the Chirene School District. It has been implemented in the Tempe Union High School District. We want to ensure that it continues to be implemented in those school districts and really expand access for young people in our community. In the area of recovery and resiliency, these are strategies related to treatment, peer support, a variety of human service activities, as well as strategies that address stigma. So here, for this year, looking to partner with a community provider around implementing those evidence-based strategies around peer support, so peer recovery coaches, case management. So helping individuals not only initially access treatment and recovery services, but continue on those recovery services, so they can continue on that wellness journey. And then additionally, looking to provide and develop a program around resource and service navigation for individuals that we serve here within Tempe that are justice-involved. So looking to replicate an already successful program that we have within our human services, our community supervision program, that's a partnership with the Tempe Municipal Courts, but specifically those, for those who are justice-involved that have opioid use disorder and substance use disorder, because we know that they commonly have barriers that make it challenging to access treatment. In the area of enforcement, these are strategies not only related to addressing the supply in our community, but also support the administration of programs within public safety. So for this year, looking to provide training on a variety of opioid use topics, as well as training for public safety on addressing the needs of justice-involved individuals with opioid use disorder or substance use disorder. And then lastly, in the area of capacity building, these are strategies that enhance our city's ability to address opioid misuse disorder, including infrastructure and staffing. So looking for this year to hire key staff, including a community health manager, community health workers, that will be helping us to not only implement these programs and strategies, but really also continue that important cross-collaborative work that's been foundational to making an impact on this issue so far.
So our ask is, we're bringing for you, before you, this investment strategy. We would like to go out and be able to form our requests for qualifications and proposals to have vendors to be able to respond, to come in, to provide these high-quality services, which by the way, were distilled down from about 300 best practices allowable in the lawsuit, down to these key focus areas, and informed, again, by a multitude of folks. And I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention the city manager herself coordinated a group of our former Tempe pre, our Tempe Works graduates, who have been in our system for a long time, to come and talk to us about the importance of peer and recovery community services out there as well. So a lot of voices are represented in what looks very simple before you, but we are looking at making this one-year investment strategy, and we're doing one year at a time because we need to stay agile and responsive. One of our guiding principles is also sustainability. We know, like example, with the preventative services on the Botman Life Skills, they might, there are other grant services on the horizon. So if we can bridge those services, perhaps the year, we can then reallocate those dollars to a new funding area in the future years to come. So we'll be back before you with an outcomes-based report next year, as well as next year's suggested investment strategy, and we'll do this for the next 18 years with you. And with that, we're certainly welcome, open any questions you might have.
Sounds good. Thank you so much for the presentation. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. It was excellent, and congratulations, your first presentation. Yeah, that's, that's saying something, a council. So. Other people could take lessons, you know, from you. You could be a presenter, educator throughout the city. So anyway, congratulations. As a former social worker, this whole approach really makes a lot of sense to me. It's very robust. I feel like you're not leaving any stones unturned, and you're, you're changing people's lives, and you're saving people's lives. You know, we talk about our first responders and that they save people's lives, but we as social workers also save people's lives. It's just in a different manner, right? So I just, I really am impressed with this whole program and with the presentation, and really appreciate everything that you do, because you can't never forget that you're saving lives. You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Anyone else, any further comments? Vice Mayor Garland? Thank you so much. Anyone else? Any further comments or questions? Vice Mayor Garland?
I'd just like to say that I support your program and what you brought to the council. If that's what you were looking for from us, is to say that we are in support of this program that you presented. I think it's a great idea to be able to use that money toward prevention and all the other programs that you have, so I'm in support.
Sounds good. I'll just say I support that as well. Councilor Hodge?
I definitely support this. Thank you so much for the hard work you're doing. Mary, I am so excited for you to be in that role. I know you're going to be phenomenal. You're already phenomenal, but you're just going to keep rolling with it, and you have a great director under Tim. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any further comments or questions? And I guess we have consensus to move forward on that item as well, so.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, that brings me to item number 3C, Park Safety Update. Ah, hello, Alex.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Alex Shavonovich, Deputy Community Services Director, Park Services. With me this evening is Ruben Wilkinson, Community Services Manager. We're here before you this evening to provide a park safety update. Today's presentation will focus on three, the three main strategies for improving the feeling of safety in parks, which are the reimplementation of the Park Ranger Program, maintenance and improvements of park spaces, and then the activation of park spaces. The presentation will also include use of technology and a supplemental security presence, as well as the addition of some additional prohibited activities in parks, at specified parks. At the center of today's presentation is Council's strategic priority, Safe and Secure Communities. More specifically, Performance Measure 1.23, the Feeling of Safety in Parks. Throughout the presentation, I ask that you keep that in the back of your mind, but also if you would keep in mind two key words, collaboration, flexibility, both of those words are very important to the reimplementation of the Park Ranger Program, as well as improving safety in our parks. So going back in time a little bit, the Park Ranger Program was approved as part of the 2024 Budget Supplemental Process. Shortly thereafter, Community Services worked collaboratively through an expedited hiring process with Human Resources. We wouldn't have been able to accomplish the hiring process without flexibility from the Human Resources team on that. We were able to quickly hire a management assistant that provides support for the program, followed up by the Park Ranger Supervisor, Michael Spikes, beginning of October of '23, and then quickly followed up with hiring 13 of the 15 Park Ranger and Park Ranger lead positions, once again through that collaborative and expedited process with HR. We worked concurrently during that process with multiple departments to develop the Park Ranger Program as we're going through the, or Park Ranger Training Program, sorry, as we're going through the hiring process. And so that way, we were able to implement that late October, when all the Rangers were hired, and then conclude the training program towards the end of November, where the Rangers hit the parks through a, both real-time or real field operations, as well as field training concurrently. Rangers began submitting reports at the beginning of December of '23, which Ruben will cover some of the data collected so far for the first six months of that later in the presentation. The Park Rangers were re-implemented with three main functions in mind. First one, to provide a proactive, visible presence in the community. Secondly, to engage with the community through ambassadorship and outreach. And then lastly, to provide a response at the appropriate level through education and at times enforcement. The Rangers accomplished that through providing 20 hours of coverage per day, seven days a week, working 5:00 AM to 1:00 AM. They do that with multiple shifts, with two Rangers working in the morning, two Rangers working an evening shift, one Ranger working every day in a swing or a bridge shift to gap that. And then additionally, two Rangers working specifically in the Rio Salado Parks or Tempe Town Lake area. And then there are three Rangers that are lead Rangers that overlap them throughout the week. So at any given time, there are as few as two Rangers across the city. And at maximum, not counting the Rio Salado Parks area, there are four Rangers counting the leads at any one given time during the day. Everything the Park Rangers have done so far has been a really collaborative effort. Equipping the Rangers has been no different, working with Public Works and Fleet to equip the Rangers with vehicles. The Rangers are now out in the parks with branded Park Ranger vehicles that has assisted with the visible presence of the Ranger Program. After some upcoming training, they've actually procured bikes now. So after some upcoming training, you may see a Ranger in a park at an event on a bike. Park Rangers are connected to police, Tempe Police Dispatch through radios. And while they're able to be dispatched directly from police communications, we are still encouraging, advocating for the community to use the One Call to City Hall to connect with a Park Ranger, advocating for the community to call Tempe 311, which helps not bog down the police communication system and allows Park Rangers to respond. I'll now turn it over to Ruben to cover the first six months of data information.
We'll share data that includes an overview of Park Ranger presence in park spaces during a six-month timeframe. From December 2023 to May 2024, Rangers submitted just under 10,000 reports. Reports are generally recorded with an initiation type, activity type, and a Ranger response. The map identifies report locations that have a higher concentration of documented reports around regional areas and sports complexes. This is a breakdown of reports taken within regional areas such as Rio Salado and Kiwanis Park, community parks such as Daley, Clark, and Papago, and neighborhood parks such as Wagner, Salaya, for a total of almost 10,000 reports. Park Ranger, sorry.
Apologize.
Park Rangers proactively visit all parks, but reports show a higher number in areas that have more activity, which tends to be community and regional parks. Initiation describes who generated the visit or call for service. In the graph, you'll see that over 88% of reports were Ranger-initiated, meaning these were proactive visits to park spaces. Only a small percentage of reports were a result of dispatch calls for service from either PD or Tempe 311. But we encourage community members and park visitors to contact the One Call to City Hall, Tempe 311, for all non-emergency-related issues or concerns, or to be put into direct contact with a Park Ranger. On this slide, excuse me, we are sharing activity types which represent why a Park Ranger visited a park. The majority of reports were related to general patrol activities. And a considerable amount were related to services to people and unsheltered engagements. In the following slides, we'll share more details for those marked with an asterisk, such as patrol activities, services to people, and services to facilities. As noted on the previous slide, patrol activities made up the majority of why Rangers went to a park. These activities include conducting proactive patrols with park, within park spaces, such as performing minor maintenance, picking up trash and litter, or performing playground and lifering inspections. The second-largest reason a Ranger went to a park is to respond to people or facility-related issues. The main concerns to point out on top of the list are dogs off-leash, parking violations, curfew, and drugs. The main concerns to point out, I'm sorry, and the largest issue related to park facilities was buildings, with the majority being damages or vandalism within park restrooms, followed by similar reports for damages to park furnishings or amenities. The last activity type to highlight is ambassadorship and outreach, which is a Park Ranger favorite. Our goal is to see those numbers increase as the program continues to develop. Rangers providing information and education is the number-one ambassadorship function within the first six months. This category also includes interactions with Playmobil participants, interactions at Arts in the Park events, working with volunteer groups such as Keep Tempe Beautiful and Clean Up Papago. And Rangers have attended HOA meetings and neighborhood meetings. And they look forward to more functions and interactions with the community. Response is an end result or an action taken by a Ranger during the time a report was taken. Most actions taken to gain compliance and fall within warnings, citations, or trespasses. One important thing to note is that Rangers will always lead with education before they proceed with enforcement protocols. The second most common action noted here is the removal of hazardous property, such as drug paraphernalia. This slide provides more specific info on the Ranger responses when action was taken. One thing to highlight on connection to services, on a previous slide, showed almost 800 unsheltered engagements with a Park Ranger, and 110 of those were connected to Hope. The majority of warning details noted were educational for park rules and parking violations. And the third graph shows us the most hazardous property collected was drug paraphernalia, along with abandoned property.
Thanks, Ruben. We know Park Rangers can't be everywhere all the time, so we've implemented a technology solution to help assist us with safety and the feeling of safety in parks. Through a pilot program, we implemented cameras at three parks, Papago, Daley, and Parker de Sosa, through a trial or a pilot program where we were able to test out some cameras. We're now in the process of procuring and installing cameras at those same three parks that'll be there permanently. That'll be connected to the Real-Time Operations Center. The timeline for kind of the go-live date is November for the connection to the Real-Time Operations Center. We've also continued to use supplemental security through contracted security to try to augment some of the Park Ranger services. Some of that is static and semi-static at a few different parks. And then knowing that the feeling of safety is only updated annually through the community survey, we've implemented another technology sort of solution, connecting with ZenCity Company to provide additional sentiment survey. So ZenCity Surveying is a monthly sentiment survey that we're able to ask the exact same questions as the community survey, but get monthly information instead of annually. Additionally, the survey allows us to obtain information such as Ranger interactions with the community, feeling of safety or improved feeling of safety potentially when the Rangers do interact with the community, additional information on park amenities, and access to those in park maintenance. The survey itself, their approach is an organic approach, so they, most of their outreach is through social media. They rotate that around to try to target different areas of the city, to have a different presence every month, with most of it coming from kind of regional areas. But you'll see, if you break down the data, if you're interested, I can provide a report to you in the future, that every month it's a little bit different, whereas like 1% of the respondents might be at this neighborhood park, and the next month it might be 2% at that park, so it fluctuates. The top three concerns in the first six months from that survey information in parks and related to safety has been homelessness, night safety, and drug use. One point to point out on night safety, broke that down further. Really, the top two concerns under night safety are lighting, no surprise on that one, and then once again homelessness. Over the first six months, the feeling of safety both daytime and nighttime has stayed pretty consistent with the previous or the last community survey results, with the daytime feeling of safety in the last six months being just slightly higher than the previous community survey at about a 74% with satisfaction, and the last community survey, I believe, was 72% for daytime. So it's real close. Two stats that we're really happy to report on, although semi-small sample size so far, is that the level of satisfaction with a Park Ranger has been over 86%, either satisfied or very satisfied with people when they interact with a Park Ranger. And then if they do interact with a Park Ranger, it has improved their feeling of safety by over 82%, showing either greatly or somewhat improved feeling of safety. So another strategy to improve the safety and feeling of safety in parks has been to continue with park improvements and maintenance and adjust maintenance concerns. We've continued to make lighting and ADA improvements, as well as work with partner departments such as Transportation and Sustainability and Graffiti Removal, as well as very specific projects such as the most recent Tempe Town Lake Pathway Bidirectional Striping. We previously came to council, well, I didn't, someone else did, a while back, came to council to update city code with additional park rules. Ever since the Park Rangers have been out in the parks, they've been able to adjust those rule violations, which has then ultimately freed up police officers to attend to other duties, not having to respond to some of those park issues. We recently implemented additional prohibited activities at specified parks, and we do anticipate coming back to council in the future for consideration for making those additional prohibited activities permanent across all the parks. And one of those, as an example, is limiting smoking in parks. So as we maintain and improve our park spaces, we'll continue to have opportunities or increased opportunities for expanding and enhancing activation. Our Park Rangers have worked, as Ruben mentioned, it's one of their favorite areas, ambassadorship outreach. They're working really hard on increasing community engagement. And they're developing programs and initiatives such as Hike with a Ranger, Read with a Ranger, the recent adoption of a garden bed at Clark Park Community Garden, and then also some upcoming STEM programming in the future. Other city programs, other city partner programs continue to activate spaces such as Playmobil, Arts in the Park events. Some of our partner programs are partner interactions such as Keep Tempe Beautiful and Clean Up Papago that Ruben mentioned earlier. And then a recent pilot program of neighborhood park activations. In closing, whether it's our programmatic initiatives, whether it's Park Rangers, recreation activities, Arts in the Parks, or just simply a Park Ranger providing a visible presence in park, everything that has happened with the Park Ranger Program has been through collaboration and support from every department in the city. The Park Ranger Program and the improvement in the feeling of safety across parks and across the city cannot have been accomplished without the support from all departments. And then obviously from council, initially from obviously funding the budget, funding the budget supplemental, but also, most recently, Councilmember Hodge got a bunch of water donated and had a ride with a Ranger. And then advocacy for the Park Ranger Program by all of you has been very much appreciated, so thank you so much. That concludes the presentation. We're available for questions, comments, feedback?
Sounds good. Thank you for the presentation. I've got several comments and questions. First of all, Councilor Burkini?
Thank you, Mayor.
My first question is, you may have said this while I was trying to get a piece of paper. You're acting, you're putting security cameras up in parks to hook into the Real-Time Operations Center. Are those going in all parks, or are those select parks?
Select parks so far. So three parks. Originally, they were identified because we were able to connect with two different companies that offered us a free, essentially, 60-day trial of program. And we extended that for a little bit of time to give us a bigger, a better picture of what that looks like. And reached out to community members and got some feedback from them. And then since then, we're now trying to procure our own cameras to install them and then connect them to the Real-Time Operations Center. So so far, only three parks.
I like that approach. I do the same thing with various streaming services, so that's smart, a good way to save some money.
I knew that was coming.
Now, I know Park Rangers don't patrol every park throughout the city at all times, and I know you guys kind of shuffle around where you see a need. So my question is, I was surprised to see that dogs off-leash is the biggest concern. And I do have some people in South Tempe who are always complaining to me about dogs off-leash and want a Park Ranger. So I guess, I guess my question is, if there's someone who lives next to a park that isn't regularly patrolled, can they call a Park Ranger in? Can they say, hey, this dog's off-leash? Is there like a non-emergency number or something they can call?
Right now, we're advocating for One Call to City Hall, so Tempe 311.
Okay.
We are actually working with IT on a process for after-hours to be able to, essentially, you call 311, no one's available to take the call, you hit 4, and then that potentially would transfer them directly to a Park Ranger cellphone. That's not in place yet, but we are working on that.
Will you let me know when that's in place, please?
Yes.
Thank you. If I was to call a Park Ranger to a park, and you guys, I mean, do you respond? If it's not, again, I'm talking about dogs off-leash here. Would that be something that a Park Ranger would respond to if a resident was to call in?
Yes, it just, the response isn't the same as like a police or Tempe Fire Medical Rescue response, where it's going to be five minutes or four minutes or whatever that time is. It could be as quick as, you know, a couple of minutes, or it could be 30 minutes, depending on the type of call, the type of request, as well as where that Ranger is located in the city at the time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Great presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you. Councilor Braddus?
Yes, one of my first questions was about response times, so Randy covered it for me, so I appreciate that. You know, you have an incredible high number of contacts with these folks. And, you know, we didn't have this program for years. I was here though before, when we did have the program, and I knew how successful it was. And the fact that you've put this program back, gotten it back up and running in this amount of time is very impressive. And I'm quite pleased about it and having our Park Rangers back is near and dear to my heart. I appreciate the support of Mayor and council members and city managers' support in bringing this program back. It's making a difference. I know that our safety numbers of feeling of safety in our parks is going to come up as a result of these Park Rangers. So that's so important, because safety is, you know, number one in our world. So I appreciate that. So I appreciate that. I would dare our park rangers program that could compete against any other city in the country with how good a job you guys are doing. I like the park security cameras, I think that's really helpful. Can't have, just can't have enough people everywhere, so that will be a good thing and that will be related to the Real Time Operations Center, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. And I love that you guys are doing monthly surveys because you're really keeping track of what's happening now, and that month by month is so important. So because if something does, is going awry, we're going to find out about it soon. And the sooner we find out about things, the better it is for preventative measures. I like that you're trying to be educational with folks because really, a lot of people, you know, they move here, they don't necessarily know. I mean, I go to other communities and the dogs are off leash and running around and, you know, no one thinks anything of it. So I think that's really good that we're doing an educational approach with it. And statistics, I'm a big statistics person, and it proves that this is working. Your statistics that you presented, it proves that this program is working well. And I'm just so impressed by the quick turnaround and getting this up and running. So thank you for your hard work and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We get to do the fun work, you all got to make the hard decisions to fund the program and support and advocate for the program, so really appreciate it, both Mayor and council as well as City Manager's Office.
Thank you. Councilor Hodge?
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions, but I also have a, I have a story, a quick story to tell you guys, it's really good that I found that when I was there. My first question is, I heard we were talking about how much we have. How much more park rangers will it take to fully fund all of our parks to make sure we have enough for all of our parks? That's just, I know we don't, I'm just throwing out a magic number, I want to know because we need to know exactly where we're at right now. I know we're not where we need to be at because I was there and I saw it, that we need more park rangers. How much more percentage of park rangers do we need to get to where we need to be at fully?
I can see Alex's face, he's like, this is a dangerous question. So don't worry, you're allowed to answer it because it was asked by a council member.
The mayor just answered for me, a dangerous question. Very, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do what shouldn't be done, I'm gonna answer your question with a question. I think it will kind of a question, it really depends on what type of coverage we want as a city and what the community expects and the level of service and how, like to Councilmember Keating's question about kind of almost response time, so to speak, if the expectation is to have similar to like a police or a Tempe Fire Medical Rescue response, it's going to be a pretty high number of park rangers that'll be needed. But I think even with some minor modifications, there can be an improvement in some of that. And some of that's just, even without additional staff, even without additional budget, some of that is over the course of time, working with the park ranger supervisor on how to deploy the resources that we do have more efficiently and more effectively. So it's not always necessary, I'm not going to turn down additional bodies, but it's not always about additional bodies and additional resources, sometimes just making best use of what you currently have.
Okay, so I challenge you to bring us back each time because we want to know, because that's one thing that Councilmember Keating, as Councilmember Keating said, I get a lot of calls on, can, why can't we have a park ranger in our area? So I just want to see, I kind of get, want to get an idea of how we can get to that point that maybe we can have park rangers almost, you know, in almost all the areas. So I know that's, I know I'm, you know, talking to Santa Claus right now, trying to get that wish, but I still would like to know because we can, we may not be able to do it all at one time, but gradually move up in that direction. And I think that's something that council needs to think about when we start thinking about budgets, or how do we handle that part about our park rangers also in there too? And my second part is, when I was out with the park rangers, I had an experience, I met an unsheltered man who came from Minnesota, and he walked from Minnesota to Phoenix because he said that his friend had told him how well Tempe does with our unsheltered people. And the fact that he had only been here for a few, maybe a few months, he knew the park rangers, and he knew them well. And he also said that he has always had a fear of law office, but never with the park rangers. So I just wanted to give that compliment that, you know, that it is being noticed. And I've heard, and I heard, I heard it with my own ears and saw it with my own eyes, that when they walked up to them, no one looked like they were fear. Matter of fact, they, no one not walked away, they all were very open, they all talked to them, and the park, and the park rangers, they have built such a relationship with the people already and when it comes to our unsheltered community in our parks. So I want to give that thanks, that gratitude, and it's been, it was well-known because if a man can walk all the way from, all the way from the Midwest all the way to Arizona just because he heard how well we treat people in our cities and parks, that's a testament to what we do in our cities, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That's a testament to Tim Birch and Community Health and Human Services as well.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garland?
Thank you for the presentation. I love data, and you had so much there that I just, I love that you explained it to us. Thank you so much for what you do. You know, all of our police chiefs, every police chief since the park rangers originally taken away have been asking and wanting the park ranger to program to come back. And it's wonderful what you've done, as Councilmember Adams said, just what you guys have been able to accomplish in this time has just been absolutely amazing. So thank you so much for all that you're doing, and thank you for the data. I have one question, I love the fact that you are going to HOAs and talking to them at their request. Where would an HOA go to book something, to be able to call you and say, we'd like a park ranger to come out and talk to us about our parks, about what they do? Who should they contact?
The best contact would be the park ranger supervisor, Michael Spikes. We can actually, I don't know if we have a link to connect directly with him on the website now, but we can certainly add that.
That would be great because I think it's, that's a great community service and an opportunity for us to shine what we do and how important it is for us to have safety in our parks and in our community, and so that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Amber?
Mr. Mayor, I will attest, the Zen City thing is working because every time I open Facebook or Instagram, I see, I see it.
Me too, every time.
If they are just like, you know, what I've said out loud so that AI, you know, knows that I'm part of the city, but it is working. I do have a question for you about the community feedback that you said that you got on the cameras on the three parks. I'm assuming that it was all positive because you're making a temporary program permanent, but I just wanted to make sure that I'm just not making an assumption.
I wouldn't say 100% positive. I think there were some hesitation early on. We met with one community specifically where there were some questions and it was more about privacy concerns, and we assured them that, you know, there's ways to block out sections of cameras and we're going to intentionally point cameras in certain directions to not view into people's houses or apartments or things like that. So I think that dispelled some of the potential issues that folks might have, but overwhelmingly, yes, supportive.
Sounds good. All right. Anyone else, any further comments, questions?
I have one more question.
Yes, Councilor Hodge?
Well, it's not really a question, I guess it's a question comment. Well, I heard you said, I know you're in the schools in the K through 8th. Do you have any ideals of what you want to do with the high school level kids? Because I know you're with the K through 8th grade kids right now.
I personally don't. I, I'll leave that to the smarter people. I think it's right now trying to grow, so hopefully grow with the kids, so starting with the K through 8 and then grow into high school. We're certainly willing to connect with, with any high school, Tempe Union High School District to be able to get in the classrooms, to get in front of kids, and even if it's not in the classroom, even if it's participating in extracurricular things with students.
I would, I would also attest to tell you that maybe you should think about career opportunities and getting them to understand that when they talk about, you know, that's a potential career move for them too. So that's why I asked that question.
Thank you. Sounds good. Thank you. Anything else? Just one very quick thing, just sort of piggybacking off of comments, I believe that Councilmember Amber and Councilmember Adams made about Zen City. I really appreciated those couple of slides about that because the reality is it shows there are people many times ask us in the community and even outside of our community, where do you, how do you make decisions about where you deploy resources? And sometimes you hear people make comments that are sort of, you know, ad hominem in nature, just sort of based on their personal perspective. But the reality is, we have community surveys, we have groups like Zen City that are collecting this kind of feedback, and what I like about it is, it gives everyone in our community a way to contribute in different ways. Some people are going to come to public meetings, or they're going to ask questions at an information session, they're going to go through their HOA or their neighborhood association, and some people might actually pose questions on social media, on a nextdoor.com or a Facebook or something of that nature. But there are other people who are not going to want to engage in that way because frankly, they're uncomfortable engaging in public, or perhaps they're not putting their opinions out there in public because they don't want to engage in a back and forth conversation or they're worried their opinion might be unpopular and they'll have to deal with other people who don't agree with them. So what I love about the community survey and functions like Zen City is that every resident, whether you're an extrovert or an introvert, or you want to speak publicly or privately, has an opportunity to share their thoughts with members of the city council as well as members of city staff about what they would like to see and how they would like for us to deploy resources. I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, item number four, call to the audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? All right, taking a long look and seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting and go on to item number five, committee of the whole. So we have some things here on proposed council subcommittees under item 5A. First up is 5A1, city nuisance ordinance, I'm going to look to Vice Mayor Garland.
Thank you, Mayor. So in our first, in my first committee of the whole item, I want to talk about, we are going to look at a city nuisance ordinance. This would be looking at performance measures, the city council priority of quality of life and the performance measure of feelings of safety in your neighborhood. This task force came together after a city, a task force was formed in the city regarding the unlawful sober living homes that were in our community. And it was made up of a group of its Community Health and Human Services, Tempe Police Department, Tempe Fire Medical Rescue, and Code Enforcement. And they had been meeting quite regularly when we were discussing sober living, illegal sober living facilities. So what came out of that is a discussion regarding developing a nuisance ordinance. We were lucky enough to have Chief McCoy that was part of that group, and he had mentioned to us when we were trying to think about what we could do in this area, had mentioned that they had something like this in Anchorage, Alaska that was pretty helpful for the community. So we would like to do some more discussions and look at what we could possibly do to have a nuisance ordinance in the city of Tempe. So I would propose this subcommittee, and the mayor has agreed to support this and moving it forward, and that is my proposal.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone have any comments or questions? Obviously, you and I have spoken about this, so I'm supportive of moving forward with this. Anyone else have any further comments or questions? Okay, I'm going to take that as consensus to move forward then, so. All right, wonderful. Thank you, Vice Mayor, appreciate the presentation. Next up, item 5A2, increased advocacy for Tempe youth with developmental disabilities, and I'm going to look to Councilmember Hodge.
Yes, thank you. So a few, about six months ago, myself and Mayor Woods was contacted by several families who have children in our school, in our schools, our Tempe schools, and they wanted increasement in advocacy in how the city of Tempe can actually assist with that. We did sit down with Tempe Union High School District and talk to them about what they were doing on their part of advocacy and what we can do. I would like to start a, because they did ask us, hey, what can the city do directly for youth and development in their life, not just in the schools but beyond? So actually doing so much information, I've been researching, and we've also, in the school district, they do have in a, a committee, and in that committee, they did ask again, can, what can the city do separately from what the school district can do? So coming with Mayor Woods, I talked to him and, and got that together and see about starting a subcommittee that will actually go into long-term academics and career and life success, not just about just what they do in the school district, but how we can assist with that advocacy after and during that time. And I would love to, the subcommittee, I would love to come up with ideals, education, because a lot of it is, a lot of the parents don't have enough of the education and we can actually help with that part of it. And we will be working contangentially with the school district, it won't be separate. The school district would definitely be a part of it and be a partner in that scenario. So I'm asking support if we can actually have that subcommittee.
Sounds good, Councilmember. Here, Councilmember Adams says she's supportive. Everybody else supportive? Yep, I'm supportive as well. So wonderful, that gets approval to move forward too. Thank you very much. All right, there are also no council subcommittee items ready for status update or city council direction this evening, so I will close that item and move to item number six, which is future agenda items. Once again, just want to note that council members may request that an item be added to a future issue review session, but in accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Would any council members like to add an agenda item to a future issue review session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Adams?
Yes, we have our trees for Tempe program, and Birdette and I are going to start working with also the, the school districts and trying to get more trees at the schools because a lot of times they don't have very many trees at all, and get the students to help us plant the trees. And so we really want to expand our shade canopy throughout the city, and this will be a great way to do it. Also want to look at parks, putting more trees in our parks, and so we'll be working on that together also. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. Madam City Manager, all good?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, thank you, Councilmember Adams. Any other future agenda items, anyone would like to add? Okay, hearing that, I'll close that discussion and move on to item number seven, announcements from the mayor and/or city manager. I have a couple of, the first one is just a very special happy birthday to former council member Barb Carter, who served on the council here for eight years. I know she's friends with each and every one sitting up here, and just wanted to thank her for her continued advocacy on behalf of the city of Tempe. She's an incredible person and wanted to make sure that I wished her a very happy birthday. So Barb, if you're watching at home, happy birthday for myself and every member of the Tempe City Council. Next up here, my other announcement is, and I will do something that I rarely do, which is actually put on a hat. It's been interesting, a couple of times recently, I've been in places where I've had to do food packing, so I've had to put on both a hairnet and a beard net at the same time, and I have photos that I will sell you for 10 bucks. But I want to also note here too, so Councilmember Keating is not here to my left, but that's because he's actually at ASU right now, speaking to a group of students about the importance of voting and voter registration. So while I'm covering this right here, he's actually on campus talking to students, trying to get them to sign up in advance of the November 5 election. So wanted to thank Councilmember Keating for his advocacy. I also see our city clerk, Kara, is wearing the latest in fashion of the voting hat as well. All right, here come, here come the hats. All right, so this proclamation reads, and Eddie, I'm going to do this up here since we don't have anyone to receive this, is that okay? All right, want to make sure you don't come after me after the meeting. So this proclamation reads, whereas the office of the Tempe City Clerk is committed to encouraging broad voter registration, access, and citizen participation in elections among voting-eligible citizens, and whereas the office of the Tempe City Clerk recognizes that many Americans are not able to vote because they miss a registration deadline, do not update their registration information, or are unfamiliar with how to register. And whereas the office of the Tempe City Clerk recognizes the need for diverse partners such as nonprofits, libraries, businesses, colleges, and universities, and more to work in the communities they serve to register citizens to vote. And whereas the need for reliable and trusted public information and education on voter registration is critical to Americans' active participation in elections and the integrity of electoral processes. And whereas the office of the Tempe City Clerk is committed to joining national efforts to support voter registration and citizen participation in elections. Now therefore I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare September 17, 2024 as National Voter Registration Day in Tempe, Arizona. You want to take a photo? So actually, so maybe after this meeting's over, let's all, I'll gavel the meeting, we can go down and take a quick photo that we can actually distribute. But I wanted to say very quickly as well, you know, we are a nonpartisan governing body, so we're encouraging everyone here in the city of Tempe, please make sure to actively to register to vote and make sure you take part in the upcoming election this November 5th, regardless of who you vote for or what issues you vote for, please make sure to vote and get registered. Next up, Madam City Manager, your announcements.
No announcements this evening.
Okay, thank you so much, really appreciate it. That brings us to item number eight, which is adjournment. The next regular scheduled work-study session is going to be on October 10, 2024. We are going to adjourn the meeting and we're going to take a photo up front. Thank you so much, everyone.